I'd like to call the Tuesday, August 6, 2024 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Fanslaw, Kluk, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got two special presentations tonight. First one, I'd like to invite Mr. Herb Thompson up.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I think most people know Herb. He's been on the Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment, Arts Council, a little bit of everything. City photographer, been everywhere, and if you don't know him, you've seen his work. He's decided to resign from Planning Commission. He's put in a lot of years, and I want to give him a proclamation. Whereas Herb Thompson began serving the City of Papillion when he was first appointed to the Board of Adjustment in 1994, whereas in 2016 Herb transitioned from the Board of Adjustment to the Planning Commission, and in 2017 he began to serve dual roles on both the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment. Whereas in total Herb has provided invaluable service to the Board of Adjustment for an impressive 30 years and on the Planning Commission for eight years. Whereas during Herb's distinguished tenure, the city's population has more than doubled, growing from 10,372 in 1990 to 23,791 in 2023, a testament to his dedication and influence. Whereas under Herb's insightful guidance on the Planning Commission, the city has approved the addition of 3,700 residential lots, 200-plus non-residential lots, and impressive 33 major subdivisions, making him instrumental in shaping Papillion's landscape for generations to come. Whereas beyond his exemplary service, Herb is a talented photographer, with his work proudly displayed in the Planning Department at City Hall. Now therefore, I, David P. Black, Mayor of the City of Papillion, do hereby present this proclamation to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude to Herb Thompson for his 30 years of unwavering commitment that has left an indelible mark on our community, enriching the lives of countless individuals, and ensuring the City of Papillion will always be a place that feels like home.
I didn't really prepare a speech, but I just would like to say thank you to Mayor Black. What a wonderful example he has set for us as a leader of this city for these years. And I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for trusting me to be a part of the Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment. I'm going to be focusing more on the arts in Papillion. I'll be meeting with the Ashland Arts Foundation on Friday. We're hoping to build better collaboration in arts districts in this area. But thank you to the mayor and to the city council and to its citizens. Thanks very much.
Next one's real special. I'd like to invite Chief Gosh and Tracy Stratman up. Chief, I don't know who's starting. Tracy.
Thank you, Mayor, Administration, and City Council for providing us this opportunity. The Recreation Department has 79 members that make up our aquatics team. Having another city department recognize members of our team is an honor and an example of the collaborative and supportive commitment the City of Papillion has. Having the various departments invest and advocate for each other is what makes this community special. I want to thank Chief Gach and the Fire Department for this recognition. I am extremely proud of our team. I see the dedication and commitment that our aquatics team has. Every member of the team has a job to make sure that all patrons are safe at all of our pools. They start with a week of seasonal training, followed by weekly in-services and certification testing to be prepared for emergencies that we hope will never happen. I'd like to thank all of our cashiers, concessionaires, and lifeguards for all they do for the citizens of Papillion. I especially want to thank Jessie Hubbard for her leadership and guidance to the aquatics team. It is because of her outstanding work ethic, love of aquatics, and contagious positive attitude that drives this team to succeed every summer. Jessie, thank you for your leadership and commitment, and thank you all for a great season.
I just want to say a few words here. These kids are outstanding. That day, their actions provided response and care to a two-year-old boy having a seizure at the Papio Bay Pool, Friday, 12 July, 2024. Working as a team to provide lifesaving measures and overall pool safety for other patrons led to a full recovery of the two-year-old boy, overall safety at the pool. Your efforts display the finest traditions of the Recreation Department, the Fire Department, and the City of Papillion. So I want to recognize each one of these kids. Tracy, I'll hand out their certificates from the department. So we'll start with the lifesaving citations to Cameron Sapinski and Reagan Caniston. And the rest will receive kind of the certificate of appreciation as they worked as a team. We'll start with Tucker Erb. Let me say all their names, and then we'll all clap. We'll be here for a while. Landon Orth, Ella Borden, Reese Guthrie, Cameron Hoak, Carter Keys, Trenton Rogers, Cody Sass, Carter Solley, Piper Sapinski, Paige Abrahamson, Mackenzie King, Aspen Ludi, Morgan Perez, Lauren Self, William Schneider, and Colton Tool. In closing, I just want to say this as the fire chief. What we see here is a team effort. This is what I work with every day. We are not able to accomplish what we do in the fire service without a team, and these folks here, these young people here, demonstrated that without a lot of training, but a lot of dedication. And two things come to my mind when I see this. One, I like to see young people take assertive measures when they need to. We don't see that a lot today, and I'm impressed. Tracy, your staff needs to be commended because you've prepared these folks to do great things. The second thing is, this is a confidence to the citizens of Papillion. You send your kids to the pool, and something happens, it's going to get handled. Just so you know, I swim like a rock, so I will need every one of you to help me. You all did a great job, so let's just give them one more round of applause.
Thank you again, and literally, the two-year-old is alive because of them.
And I just also want to again say thank you to the lifeguards, Jessie, Tracy, your team, everyone. It is absolutely incredible to thank that most, if not all, of those recognized tonight, those heroes that we recognize tonight are all teenagers, most if not all of them. Just incredible. Having a two-year-old myself, it's very close to home. So thank you very much, very appreciative from the bottom of my heart, the rest of the city staff and the community, truly thank you for everything.
And if you want to move it on to the Fire Department, Chief might give you priority points in the scoring for the hiring.
There you go. There you go. There's always that. All right. And then another event to give a big thank you to is to our Public Works first responders and all of our city employees, including parks, police, fire, recreation, and countless other employees throughout the city for helping the city clean up from last Wednesday's windstorm, devastating windstorm. And also a big thank you to our OPPD, Public Power Partnership, for everything they've done. They're still working around the clock to get everybody restored. Most citizens in Papillion have been restored, but there are a few that they're still trying to get connected. So again, thank you to everyone for that. Due to the severity of the storm, we are anticipating that we will need a budget amendment for our fiscal year '24-'25 budget. That's to account for, we know that we need a new roof at one of our water plant buildings, which caused a little bit of minor disruption. We were able to get that back on up really quick. Thank you, Mike, to his team for that. But also, the chipping that we're going to need to do for the debris and get that cleaned up is all going to be additional costs that weren't accounted for in the budget that we prepared. So we will need to do that, and that will be at the third reading, so not next meeting, but the following. And again, thank you to everyone who helped our community and all of our partners and all of our first responders. And then just another note regarding the '24-'25 budget. It is being introduced tonight, but then a reminder, just like we've had to do in prior years, that there will be a public hearing after the next council meeting. So we schedule that for 7:30 PM, and then as long as we don't hold the public hearing before that, as long as it's after 7:30, then we adjourn the city council meeting and hold the public hearing on the budget. So just a reminder that that will be occurring next meeting on August 20, the city council meeting. And I thank her every year, but thank you to Nancy and her team for their work on the budget, plus our department heads. We're very proud of our budget this year. We've done the best we can. We were able to make some cuts and some changes, so we're very proud of it, and again, thank you to the whole team for that. And then just a reminder, there are two more Papillion farmers markets left for the season, tomorrow and next week, and as always, that's at City Park, 5:30 to 8:30 PM both days. So make plans, stop by, your last two opportunities. And then speaking of City Park, I want to give you a quick update on the capital improvement plans for that, that we're working on for that. If you recall, a few meetings ago, you approved in agreement with Confluence to do the design for the work. So that's the walking path area where they do Farmer's Market and Papillion Days, and then also the parking and the road structure there, but also the park area. So they're working on design. They're working with internal city staff plus administration, Mayor Black, myself. We've been involved in some of those meetings on kind of the design. In the next three to four weeks, they should have that wrapped up, so we can present that to you guys to get your feedback on how that's going. We are going to have to do the work in phases, so the current year budget does include Phase One. We're still determining the scope of Phase One. You guys will be a part of determining that, and then we will have to probably carry some of that funding over for the Phase One into the next year's budget, but we're beginning work on that, so more to come on that. And then a quick sewer agency update. The agency is working on mending the growth management plan. It's been about four years or so since we've last really looked at a comprehensive update for that. Part of that update includes reviewing the phasing to determine if we continue the plan as it is presented, or if we amend it to meet the developers' and community needs. We're also looking at options for pioneering phases of that, portions of that, and what that would look like in the policy for that. If we do update the growth management plan, just so you guys are aware, we'll go to the Planning Commission for recommendation, and then to all of you for approval. And until that, if it does happen, or until it happens, we are following the current phasing and the current plan. It could take up to a year till we get that fully updated and ready for recommendation for all of you. So again, just for anybody that's concerned or hearing about it, we are following the current phasing of the sewer agency plan until it's very publicly amended in a year or so, if that happens. And then finally, as you're aware, there's a lot happening at the state level regarding to the property tax relief options in the special session. Mayor Black, myself, the League, United Cities, we're all staying on top of it as best as we can, continuing to tell the local municipality story. We really don't quite yet know exactly the direction it's going. We do think after next week, there'll be more clarity that we can share, but just to let you all know that we're staying on top of it the best we can. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Kluk. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
A is zero and S.
Motion passes. Next is Item D1, Ordinance 2025. An ordinance to amend Section 20578 Site Development Regulations of Article 12, Office District, Section 20583 Site Development Regulations of Article 13, Limited Commercial District, Section 20589 Site Development Regulations of Article 14, CC Community Commercial District, Section 20594 Site Development Regulations of Article 15, GC General Commercial District, Section 205103 Site Development Regulations of Article 17, LI Limited Industrial District, Section 205107 Site Development Regulations of Article 18, General Industrial District, Section 205193 Application of Article 32 Industrial Design Guidelines, Section 205219 Principal Buildings of Article 34 Supplemental Site Development Regulations, Section 205302 Special Use Permit Procedure of Article 40, Administration and Procedures, All of Chapter 205 Zoning, Having to Do with Large Project Special Use Permit Regulations, The Application Area for Industrial Design Guidelines, and the Amendment Process for Special Use Permits. Is there a council member to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Fanslow. Item D2, Ordinance 2029, An Ordinance to Amend the Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Budget. Councilmember to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. D3, Ordinance 2030, An Ordinance to Adopt the Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Budget. Councilmember to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Gaines. D4, Ordinance 2031, An Ordinance to Establish 2024-2025 Salary Ranges for Management Exempt Positions. Councilmember to introduce?
I'll introduce.
By Councilman Glover. D5, Ordinance 2032, An Ordinance to Approve a Change of Zone from R4 Multi-Family Residential to CC Community Commercial for Property Legally Described as Part of Tax Lot F, Tax Lot G, and Part of Tax Lot H of Section 36 Township 14 North Range 11 East of the 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southeast corner of Highway 50 and Highway 370. The applicant is Stan Horrell with Metro Community College. Is there a council member to introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Kluk. Item F1, Resolution R240128, It's a Public Hearing and a Vote, A Resolution to Approve a Class C Liquor License for Warren Industries LLC Doing Business at Brownies Bar and Grill, 125 East Second Street, and a Manager Application for Warren Alex Haas. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents or opponents? Is the applicant here? Okay. Any proponents or opponents? Any? We've got a fairly short meeting. You want to give a little commercial on what you're doing? Come on up to the podium. Just introduce yourself, let everybody know what you're doing.
I appreciate following all of the heroes that we had, or the guy that just sells beer and hamburgers.
If you give name and address, just for the record.
So my name is Warren Alex Haas. I go by Alex. So if you see me down at the bar, just call me Alex. I don't know if I have much of a commercial. I think people here are more familiar with Brownies than I am, but I've spent a lot of time there in the last month. I took over on July 1, and it was an interesting month, and it flew by, so now I'll try to learn the bar business a little bit. I've been working with compliance issues for the last six weeks. I've heard from health inspection that went well, Nebraska State Patrol, that went well, and today I had the fire marshal inspection, and I have a couple of small items to take care of before they're going to approve it, but two weeks, I would say, I'll have those done. So yeah, it should just be business as usual down at Brownies, and I hope I get approved for the liquor license.
Appreciate it. Well, welcome to town.
Thank you. I do love the town. You guys should be very proud.
I want to point out that you're taking over a bar that is a major place of downtown Papillion. And when you say that you're not going to have any changes, I'm really glad to hear that, because the burden is on you now to keep that place to be the type of place that has attracted people for years.
I'll continue that. The only changes will be ordered from the city, so anything that changes is going to be... I don't want to make these changes, but I bought a special shirt, too, so that I fit in everybody.
Brownies is one of those Papillion places that, oh, man, people know what you're talking about.
Yeah, it will be for years to come as well.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Ingberg.
If you decide to remodel, let me know, because my grandfather, great-grandfather built the back bar, the bar at that place.
Is that right?
And my great-grandfather had a movie theater in that building.
Yeah, I've heard that story.
So if you go to tear it out, let me know. I'd like to have a little piece of it.
Won't, that shouldn't be happening. It's funny, I've had 70-year-olds tell me they've been drinking there since they were 12. So if you do that math.
Okay.
I'm familiar with the history a little bit. Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R240128?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover. Any other... Oh, second. Councilwoman Kluk. Any council discussion? Please vote.
A is zero and S.
Motion passes. Related item F2, Resolution R240140, Resolution to Approve a Keno Satellite Operator Agreement between Players Keno Inc. and Warren Industries LLC Doing Business at Brownies Watering Hole, 125 East Second Street, Papillion, Nebraska. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R240140?
I'll introduce.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
A is zero and S.
Motion passes. F3, Resolution R240130, Motion to Approve Matthew Claus as the Corporate Manager for Blazin' Wings Inc., Doing Business at Buffalo Wild Wings, 212 for their Class A Liquor License. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R240130? Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Fanslow. Any proponents or opponents? Is the applicant here?
Yes.
All right, thanks. Any council... You can say something if you want to, but you don't have to. I do appreciate you being here, though, because it is important. Sometimes if the applicant's not here, it raises more questions, so appreciate it. Any council discussion? Please vote.
A is zero and S.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your business down there, too. F4, it doesn't have the long memories of great-grandparents and bars, but...
We're going to need them.
All right. F4, Resolution R240096, A Resolution to Approve Title VI Assurances and Implementation Plan. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R240096?
I'll introduce.
Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kluk. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
A is zero and S.
Motion passes. Somewhat related, F5, Resolution R240131, A Resolution to Approve an ADA Rehabilitation Act Policy and Assurances. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R240131?
I'll introduce.
Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Mumgarth. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
A is zero and S.
Motion passes. F6, Ordinance 2028, An Ordinance to Approve a Change of Zone from MU Mixed Use to CC Community Commercial for the property legally described as Lots 6 and 7 Shiwi Farms and Lots 1 and 2 Shiwi Farms Replat 1, generally located on the northeast corner of South 120th Street and Highway 370. The applicant is Gerald Torzan, Shiwi Farms. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2028?
I'll introduce.
Motion by Councilman Fanslow.
I'll introduce.
Second by Councilman Stube. Any discussion? Please vote.
A is zero and S.
Motion passes. F7, Resolution R240133, A Resolution to Approve a One-Year Extension of the West Papillion Catholic Community Preliminary Platte Extension. Motion to approve Resolution R240133?
I'll introduce.
Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Sunday. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
A is zero and S.
Motion passes. F8, Resolution R240135, It's a Public Hearing and a Vote, A Resolution to Approve the First Amendment to the Granite Creek East Subdivision Agreement. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Any proponents or opponents? Close the public hearing. Motion to approve Resolution R240135?
I'll introduce.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Stube. Please, any discussion? Please vote.
A is zero and S.
Motion passes. F9, Resolution R240136, Resolution to Approve the Amended and Restated Highway 370 Mixed Use Development Access Easement and Maintenance Agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R240136?
I'll introduce.
Motion by Councilman Fanslow.
I'll introduce.
Second by Councilman Kluk. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
A is zero and S.
Motion passes. F10, Resolution R240142, A Resolution to Approve an Application from American Legion Harry Bossard Doing Business at American Legion Post 32, 230 West Lincoln Street, Suite 201, to delete a portion of the licensed premises from the Class C Liquor License. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R240142?
I'll introduce.
Motion by Councilman Stube.
I'll introduce.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Proponents, you want to come up and share what you're doing? Give you a chance for a commercial.
I need to share.
I think most people are aware, but if not...
So basically, being the post commander for the past four years, we've kind of analyzed what we were doing, and what we were doing well, and what we didn't do so well. Turns out, back in 2018, we reinvented the wheel, and it turned out it didn't work out so well. So when I became commander, I went back and talked to all the past restaurants and asked them what we could do to fix this. It turns out, over time, we've learned. We've kind of changed this business model where me, as a post commander, I need to go back to being a post commander and not an owner of a bar. So we've also looked at, we knew we had a partnership with Moran's. We knew they respected what they did for the post. As legionnaires, they supported all of our events, so we knew they did well. They did well during COVID. They respected our building. They took care of our building. They kept it impeccably clean. So we were excited when they did, they were looking for a second location. Just so happens that we worked it out with this. It enables them to be successful before we had a partnership, and when one side's trying to make profits just off alcohol and the other side's just trying to make profits off of the food, it doesn't work out well for anybody. So we've managed to work out a better agreement with them. We know what we're getting. They're great partners. This is what we need for the post to be successful for many years to come. If you've seen a lot of posts around the state, they're struggling a little bit. A lot of them are kind of not making it because they haven't put the work in. So this helps us. We can lease that property and actually should take us well into the future.
Appreciate what the post does, so thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any council discussion? Mr. Sunday.
I have a question up. Maybe this doesn't pertain to anything, but the barbecue restaurant that was in there, that was very good. What happened there?
Uh, we don't have enough time. So I'm on record, so I'll be careful what I say, but we've done everything in a 12-month lease. The lease was up. We elected not to agree with it, like I alluded to before. We need to make sure people respect our building, because we're ran by legionnaires. They own that building. They need to respect what our mission is. Moran's has always helped us support that. So it turned out it wasn't a very good partnership. I'll kind of leave it at that, but now we know we have the right people in there to work with for a long time.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
A is zero and S.
Motion passes. F11, Related Item, Resolution R240141, Public Hearing and a Vote, Resolution to Approve a Class C Liquor License for Moran's Grill LLC Doing Business at Moran's Grill, 230 West Lincoln Suite, 101, Manager Application for Steven Cronell. It's a public hearing. I'll open it. Proponents? Is Steven here? Okay. Any opponents? Welcome home, too. Appreciate it. People are excited when they heard that Moran's was coming back in. Close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R240141?
I'll introduce.
Motion by Councilman Kluk.
I'll introduce.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Any other discussion? Please vote.
A is zero and S.
Motion passes. You got the best wings ever. Item F12, Also Related, Resolution R240145, A Resolution to Approve a Keno Satellite Operator Agreement between Players Keno Inc. and Moran's Grill LLC Doing Business at Moran's Grill, 230 West Lincoln Street, Suite 101. Motion to approve Resolution R240145? Motion by Councilman Stube.
I'll introduce.
Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
A is zero and S.
Motion passes. F13, Resolution R240143, Resolution to Approve a Settlement and Release Agreement relating Motion passes. F. thirteen Resolution R. twenty four zero one four three. Resolution to prove a settlement and release agreement relating to Pinnacle Enterprises Inc. versus City of Papillion, Nebraska. C. one one three thirteen oh four, I mean CI thirteen thirteen oh four. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. twenty four zero one four three? Motion by Councilman Cluke? Second by Mr. Mumgarth. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
I have a.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sunday.
I got a question, Ms. Hutter.
Yes.
Could you just explain what this lawsuit was about? Because it looks like Papillion's on the short end of this lawsuit that we've settled. And I, for one, would like to know about it and what it's all about.
Am I on here? Um, I'll give you kind of a high level from the legal side of it, and then I might actually kick this over to Mr. Strusma, as he was an integral part of this, including testifying in court. On the legal side of it, it's just a takings issue. They challenged the award, the offer that was initially made. There are multiple parties. The city, the county, and the state are all involved in this. The matter went to trial. Mr. Strusma testified on behalf of the city. It was actually, I think legally considered a win as compared to what they were requesting, what the potential exposure was for the city.
You're saying it's a takings case?
Yes.
Like?
Property.
Imminent domain?
Yes.
I thought we had a policy. We didn't do that unless, could, somebody help me out here, because?
Mr. Strusma, you want to give the background on the actual case? So, this project was the improvement to eighty-fourth Street, generally south of Highway three seventy. It was a federal aid project, so eighty percent funded with federal dollars, ten percent funded by City of Papillion, and ten percent funded by Sarpy County. A property owner along that corridor essentially claimed that they lost all use of their property because we put a curb along that edge of the road and sued us for millions of dollars. So, in the sense that, you know, the jury award was, I think, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and then there's some attorney fees on top of that. I think they were, this is me speculating. I think there was a hope for settlement, but we thought that this was, I dare say, frivolous in nature, and we took it all the way to a jury.
Okay, so, leads me to the next question. If that's the case, and it sounds like we, at least they got some sort of judgment in their favor. Doesn't look like it was a great deal of money, but.
Yeah, and I think we had originally calculated about a thirty-six thousand dollar, what we owed them for the easements.
So, what you're asking us to do tonight is to approve a further settlement of the issue of attorney's fees and expert witness fees and other expenses related to the case that we don't necessarily have to pay. And a judge would typically decide those issues after hearing the facts behind the scenes, correct? The good faith negotiations and all of that. Am I correct?
So, this is kind of a unique area. Because the value of the property taken was deemed to be fifteen percent or greater higher than what was offered, all attorney's fees are owed. So, this is a case where it's being settled for less than what.
All reasonable attorney's fees.
Correct.
And the judges oftentimes will say, that's not reasonable. This is reasonable. Am I right?
Potentially.
Cut it by two-thirds in many cases.
With, we have, we have outside counsel in this matter, and their estimation is that it, we probably would not fare quite that well.
Okay, well, what I'm seeing we're paying here is probably roughly seventy percent of what they're asking for as a settlement? Is that about right?
I, I, I wouldn't, I would hesitate to put a number on it. It is, it is a portion. It's.
Well, I was just going off the figures that were provided to us, and it looks like we're agreeing to pay roughly seventy percent of what they've asked for as a way to wrap it up. Am I right?
Approximately, yeah. Yep, and I, and I don't, I don't mean to quibble about that, but I don't want to, I don't want to say it's seventy percent, because we have the amount that has been awarded by the court. And so, that, that is, that's set.
Right.
And then it's when we get into the attorney's fees, then that's where it's.
No, and I'm not talking about the amount that's been awarded by the court. That's done.
Yes.
I'm talking about the issues that are still before the court. Attorney's fees, expert witness fees, et cetera.
Correct. Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay, I guess I'll be. Turn to Councilmember Sunday. So, so what should we conclude from that fact that you've drawn out, that yes, you know, settlement is always, you know, typically a percentage of how bad you could lose, and that's true of everybody. So, what, I mean, if you, do you think we ought to vote against this for that reason, or what?
I didn't say it was one way or the other. Thing into my questions necessarily, but I think everybody here, we're being asked to sanction this plea agreement or this agreement, and before we agree to sanction this agreement, we should understand it. So, that's what I was trying to draw out, so that I could understand it, and hopefully, everybody else here has a better understanding than they did before. What conclusion I reach is probably irrelevant, but.
Well, you know, and you and I have both, we've both spent a career in the legal world, and I've been involved in many civil lawsuits with settlements, and I can tell you right off the bat, I don't think I've ever could conclude a hundred percent that the settlement was a good idea, because settlements are always a roll of the dice. Lawsuits are a roll of the dice.
Either in action or inaction, both have.
Yeah. I've walked away from settlements that I've thought, ooh, man, how did I get so lucky? And then I've walked away from settlements thinking, gosh, that was a lot of money. How much should I give away? Yeah, I don't know what to conclude. Yeah, you've, you've got a good point that we ought to understand what we're doing, and we're paying a significant percentage of what they, what we might lose. I don't know what I can conclude from that, other than there are times that you just have to say, enough already, let's quit. And that's where I'm at.
Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I'll just throw one other question out there, and that's Mark indicated that this was a federal aid project, so it was eighty percent federal and ten percent City of Papillion, ten percent the county. From the standpoint of this particular settlement, this was related to a federal aid project. So, is there any potential reimbursement to the city for costs associated with this? Because this taking was related to that particular project.
So, the way it has been structured throughout the litigation, which predates my time here, is that the Nebraska Department of Transportation through federal reimbursement is responsible for eighty percent of the cost. The county is responsible for ten, and then the city is responsible for ten. So, the city's actual fiscal impact under this is that thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for that reason.
A is zero and S.
Motion passes. I think that's all of the regular agenda items. One item that was on consent that we went by very fast, well, we recognized Mr. Thompson and his retirement. His seat was open, and on the consent agenda was the appointment of Heather Bernady, and I just realized you were here, so I didn't recognize you earlier. So, Heather has been an alternate on the planning commission. So, not a full member, but if the full planning commission was not here, then she would see that, that. And so, tonight with the approval of the consent agenda, Heather moved from being an alternate to a full commissioner. So, thank you again for your service. Appreciate it. Committee reports. Finance Administration, Mr. Ingberg.
We had a rather raucous meeting tonight. We had a lot of items on the agenda. The first four items that I'll mention, I will go into great detail, but they were all recommended to move forward to the full council with one exception, and I'll let that council member address it when it comes to the council. But the first item we discussed was a fee for public right-of-way use. And what that basically deals with is, for example, if there's a construction project on eighty-fourth Street, and there's a entire lane of traffic blocked off for the work, but nobody's working for two weeks, but it impacts the traffic, the safety, and everything else. To get around that, the city would like to recommend a fee for that type of disruption, because we don't control that necessarily right now, and there's a certain development on eighty-fourth Street that had one lane closed for probably two months and very little work. So, this will help alleviate that. They're not to go after residential customer or people or anything. It's more as a tool for public works to deal with it. The second item was had to do with a water meter fee for the, for the folks that monitor our water, water billing and stuff. We'd go from eighty-nine to ninety-six for this next year. That's where we had the one council member, committee member, I should say, that disagreed with doing that. However, since three to one it was recommended, it'll come to the full council. They can discuss it and do what they may. We also discussed a water tap fee. What that involves is when one-inch water lines are put in, right now, the tap, or not the tap, the tap for it goes straight into the water main. And we're finding that over time, they tend to fail, and that damages the water main and causes a lot more disruption and cost. So, what this fee will be for is to require one-inch taps on our main water lines or water, water line mains to have a saddle put in, like we do in all the other ones, and that'll wait, alleviate that, that kind of damage. The last item we discussed was, in that first four, was the park, park fees for development. Right now, if council recalls, when we have new developments come before us, some will assign or dedicate a portion of the development for park, for parks. Some don't. Most cities around us charge a fee so they can develop parks more uniformly. Many times now, we, we get park land donated to us by the developer. A lot of times, it's drainage ways. It's kind of scrubbed land. It's not really high-quality parks. What this will do is it'll, it'll encourage developers to provide park, park land as needed according to our park plan. It'll also develop, cause us to develop park, neighborhood kind of parks in these new developments. So, eventually, as growth occurs and the new developments start to connect, it'll enable us to have one central regional park once that happens. That's just the bare bones of it, but that'll be coming before the full council after some more work is done on that. The next item we talked about was moving the, the police department requested we move and redo the lot line just north of the curb police station by thirty-seven feet, which will more adequately add additional parking they need. And if anything develops next to it, which is also city land, for example, I'm not saying it's going to happen, but if we put a fire station on the north side of the police department, that new parking will also be able to be shared with a facility, another city facility, whatever it might be. So, that'll be coming, coming to the council. Also, we had some discussion in the previous F. and A meeting about dangerous dogs, and we didn't need to change, we don't need to change much we have in the ordinance, but there'll now be a, if the council approves, there'll be a hundred-dollar fee for potential dangerous dogs, and not by breed, but by prior action of that particular animal. And an individual, if they happen to get a, the Humane Society considers a potential dangerous dog or dangerous dog, a person can appeal it, but they have to pay a hundred fifty-dollar fee for the, to, in order to appeal it. If they win their appeal, then they get that money refunded back to them. But that way, it eliminates frivolous appeals. That's why we decided to recommend adding that. And then the last thing that we discussed is, wasn't it really an item to take any action on tonight as far as recommendation? Well, we had some discussion with the Recreation Director regarding the dramatic increases we've seen since two thousand twenty, fees from third-party agencies and stuff to process our credit cards that our customers might use. And from two thousand twenty until now, it's gone from about twenty-two thousand in two thousand twenty, which isn't a real accurate year because of the pandemic, but it's now up to, at this point in time in this year, seventy-four thousand for just one of our locations. And it suggested that we continue to look at it, and we also make it, so if it is going to be considered by the full council, there's a recommendation, I think by Councilman Sunday, that we apply it to all facilities that take payment in that fashion. And there's a lot more discussion. The Parks Director just wanted to get some feedback from at least four of us tonight to see whether to pursue it or how to pursue it. So, on that, finished it about up, and the first four items will come back to the council.
Full agendas. I appreciate that. Mr. Sunday.
I just want to add or make the correction to that. Those fees, my only point I was making is that if you're going to do it here, you have to do it everywhere. That, but I'm not in favor of them.
Appreciate that. Mr. Mumgarth.
Yeah, I just want to echo that and point out to all the council members. I was struck by the increase in the fees that we're paying for the use of credit cards. Well, the use of the credit cards to pay for city fees has increased tremendously. That costs us money. And, you know, we either have to sit there and say, well, we're going to eat it, or we got to pass that on. And this is something you see daily, in your daily life. Over and over again, you're seeing places where you'll use a credit card, and they'll point out to you that it's, that if you pay cash, it'll be cheaper, and they'll cut the fee out of that. I find it really interesting, the amount of the increase that's been occurring, and we're going to have to do something about it. So, keep that in mind the next time you, you go someplace and they have two fees, one for cash and one for a credit card. We may need to do that in the future ourselves.
Appreciate it. Mr. Sunday.
I, I didn't really think we were going to be debating this, but I do not, I do not think it's costing the city money. It's saving the city money, because we are not having to staff nearly as heavily as we would be if everybody had to come to the courthouse like in the old days and pay their city water bill and pay this bill and pay that bill and wait in line to do so. You'd have to have a lot more people on staff and pay a lot more benefits. So, sometimes it takes a little money to save a little money, and that's what this is. We shouldn't be nickeling and diming the public at every turn.
I do want to be careful that it's not a published agenda item. Mr. Ingberg.
I'm not going to discuss it directly, but now the rest of the council and the mayor and the staff can understand why it was a rather raucous meeting. But I will, but I will say this. I, I think I can speak for the other members of the committee. Regardless of our individual opinions about it, we did want them to go back and look at the issue and come back with some recommendations and some possible solutions. So, in the end, we'll look out for the citizens.
Appreciate it. We can even negotiate with those providers to see if they'll adjust their fees. So, the data will be good to have. Any other council comments? Any comments from the floor? Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I just had maybe a question and then also a comment. When we're talking about a storm we had last week, and there's a significant amount of damage that's within the Papillion area and also within Sarpy County. Has there been a? Has there been a declaration made from the standpoint of emergency? And if there has, have we assumed Sarpy County has reached that dollar amount threshold? Will there be a potential for reimbursement? And then also, my comment would be just maybe some additional information to the public with regard to our cleanup efforts.
So as far as the dollar amount of the threshold, I don't know if we know that yet. But in anticipation of it, we do, I did declare the emergency, so we have done that. I think the, I don't know if the governor declared one at the state level, I can't remember. I think he did. So I think we have the state one, I think the county did, and then I did the city one. So yes, it is out there if we hit that threshold. And forgive me, we've we've had the emergencies before too. So if either NEMA or FEMA get into a reimbursement, I think the staff is already working on on the documentation that's needed. And as far as cleanup days, I think the latest update I've got, and I'll sanity check it as I say it, realizing with the high heat we've had, a lot of people have been without power. Cleaning up their properties wasn't necessarily the highest priority, it was actually staying safe. And so with that, I have asked that we keep the cleanup, the tree dump open through the weekend, realizing a lot of people are going to take this weekend as it cools down, they got their power back to work on that. I don't think I got confirmation we were doing that, but I did ask for that. And then as far as the cleanup go, oh, here it is, Monday through Friday. So the rest of the week will be seven to four-thirty, and then Saturday and Sunday will be eight to five, so thank you for that. That is a heavy lift on the staff. And then as far as the citywide cleanup, we're following the procedure we did in the last storm, which was, what, July twenty twenty-one, where we're asking people to keep things under four inches in diameter and around six feet in length, and then keep it into the parking area, so up along the street. And then at the appropriate time, we haven't published when, Public Works will start going through and hit all the streets. And generally, we'll make one pass through the city. We will not go onto private property. And we don't have the equipment or the manpower to do huge trees, that's why we put the four-inch diameter. Anything and it'll take a period of time, so don't have an expectation it's going to be cleaned up in a week. Anything else to share? Oh, we did start Monday already, so thank you for that. So but I think the expectation with constituents is it'll probably take, I'd set the expectation, it's going to be a couple of weeks. Any anything else shared in relation to that? Any other questions? Mr. Ingberg.
I'd just like to take a second along the same line of thought. First of all, I want to commend the city staff for their efforts because a lot of people don't realize, in addition to getting all the trees out of the street, they have a lot of trees they had to take care of in the parks. They had trees everywhere, and they did a great job of clearing clearing out the streets. If anybody drove around the night of the storm, they had a heck of a mess, and they got it out in a hurry. Mark, thank you and your folks and Tony and the parks people for all their hard work. But one thing that I don't think a lot of people notice, and I want to mention this too, I want to commend the mayor and Amber and Mark and administrative staff how quickly they got information out to everybody and how they quickly they got information to all of us. I mean, you know, my trees were still dropping limbs, and Amber was sending out messages, and so was the mayor. So I just want you to know, I appreciate that, citizens have noticed that. The information came out from you guys, and it was really helpful for a lot of people.
And I think what people don't see behind the scenes is the the staff coming together in in emergency operations. So we had great communication at the staff level, rolling up to Amber and then working that out, so it was it was a good team. And then the other thing I don't think people realize, and again, it's the thanks of the staff, is there were city facilities impacted. So at the same time, they're trying to take care of the messages, take care of the parks, keep the citizens happy. They're also dealing with a water plant and a salt storage facility roof with a roof gone as well, so it was a heavy lift. Mr. Sunday.
I agree with everything Councilman Ingberg just said. I do have one further question about our golf courses. Could someone give us an update as to how our golf courses fared through the storm last week?
Amber?
Yeah, I would say overall, generally fairly well, surprisingly. Yep, so we've gotten estimates back, and out of the impacted departments, it was fairly low, so. And I and I would accredit that to the upkeep and maintenance that they do all year long to.
On the trees.
Yep.
Thank you.
Mr. Memgerd.
On a slightly different subject, the city administrator in her report indicated that you've been discussing with or joining with the United Cities in taking a position with respect to the property tax valuation, property tax laws that are being discussed in the special session. I noted that you sent out an email a couple of weeks ago, link the email, outlining your view of it. Can you kind of give us a summary of where we're standing with our position with regard to the tax valuation or the tax adjustments?
Yeah, I would say at the highest level, there's four things from a city perspective that we care about. One is whatever the governor or the legislature passes, we're asking them to make sure that that does not take effect necessarily this next fiscal year, because we're at the tail end of our budget process. And so if they if they make dramatic changes, do we even have time to, from a public legal notification approval process, to even react to that? So we ask them to be sensitive to the timing and what we can legally do and not do. And it sounds like they they've they recognize that, so I think they're being sensitive around the implementation of whatever occurs. The second one is the governor's plan initially had a zero percent hard cap on revenue. And some of the things we're just trying to explain is we've got union contracts with our public safety for negotiated increases. We're seeing health insurance at fifteen percent. We have natural disasters we're dealing with. So some of it's just the practicality of a zero percent when inflation is three percent, and then we have those others. And a lot of the discussion has been around public safety. In fact, I think the governor came out and said there will be an exclusion for public safety from that zero percent. So we're just asking for some sensitivity around that percentage. Is it a hard cap or is it a two or three percent inflation increase? Then the third one, those were probably the two big ones. And then the other one is if there's been a voter-approved bonds and they have a zero percent increase, what can we meet our bond obligations? So sensitivity around that. And then the other one that we're raising, it will not be handled with this legislative session, but we're raising the issue a lot. Most of the plan that we hear about is lower property tax, which obviously is an issue, and everybody wants that. And then if it if the if there's revenue to be made up, that revenue is either coming from the increase in the sales tax or the exemptions that they're promoting to get rid of, or some conversation about a change in income tax. Well, the two things that we're raising there is, one, if you lower the property tax, which generally sounds good in theory, however, how much land and property is owned by out-of-state property owners? And that's ag, it's residential, it's commercial, and it's industrial. So if you lower the property tax across the board, the out-of-state ones just had their property tax lowered, but they're not necessarily paying the increased sales tax or income tax. So that did shift that tax to the Nebraskans. There's philosophical discussion there, but from a city perspective, what we care about is you lowered the out-of-state property tax, you raised their corresponding sales tax, but a lot of those out-of-state businesses get an incentive from the state, Nebraska Advantage or Imagine Nebraska Act. We're not a party to that agreement, the business signs it with the state. And what that agreement does is it rebates their sales tax back to them. So now what you have is a business that has been incented to come to Nebraska. The revenue that we get has historically been their property tax. We have to rebate their their sales tax back to them. Well, now their property tax is lowered. Their sales tax has increased, but it's still rebated back to them, so they just ended up with a double benefit, and we get no no local revenue. So that was one of the things is somehow just make sure they address Nebraska Advantage, so there's not an unintended consequence of too much of a rebate to the business, and we actually lose some. The other piece then with that is when a business submits their sales tax, or any retailer submits sales tax to the state, when they fill out that form, it's my belief that they gen, when it says, what city are you collecting local sales tax on, R one and a half? Well, most people are probably using their postal address. Where are you at? I'm in Papillion, I'm in Omaha, I'm in La Vista. But we know the postal address does not match up with our jurisdictional boundary. Within the city of Papillion jurisdictional boundary, we have addresses with Omaha, La Vista, Springfield, Papillion, and Bellevue. And so when a business submits their sales tax, is it being credited to us? The more that shifts from property tax to sales tax, the more critical that question becomes because we need to make sure we're getting our revenue, and today we're probably not getting all the revenue. So we're asking for a modernization of the submission process on sales tax. And then the other issue then related to that same conversation is when the state gives us our monthly sales check, there is zero backup documentation. We don't know what makes that up, and so we're asking for an ability to audit that. So really, it's just as the shift moves from property tax to sales tax, the issue of the submission, the reporting, the audibility becomes critical, so we're asking for that to be addressed too. That'll probably be for the next long session, not in this one. Did I miss anything, Ms. Powers?
And then we're also, if you guys see the any amendments, they're looking at removing the occupation tax cap, which is a direct response of United Cities pushing for that as a source, because right now it's capped, so.
That's probably not as big for us, because we don't have a lot of occupation taxes, but a couple of the other surrounding cities do. So we're not necessarily getting into the weeds of all the bills, we're looking at the major impact of municipality, which is the timing, the sales tax, the shift, and some of the reporting and audibility.
Okay, I noted in your email, you you brought up the question of whether is this a valuation problem or a tax rate problem?
Well, and that goes back to that idea of the out-of-state. And so what my what I proposed in my email on that was, actually, if you keep the valuation higher at the market value and keep some level of a levy on there, which sounds counterintuitive when you want to lower property tax. If you keep that up there, your out-of-state property owners will still pay that that share. But then use the homestead exemption process to start giving credits. If you're a Nebraska property owner, give a credit on the valuation to lower it. If you are a homeowner occupied, give another one. If you're elderly, give a credit. If you're low-income, give a credit. If you're a business investing in Nebraska through jobs, give a credit. If you're a family farmer, give a credit. And let these be layered. So theoretically, you could get to, if you're a homeowner in Nebraska, in your own, you could get the valuation down to zero through the exemptions, but you didn't credit the out-of-state guy, so he's still paying his fair share.
Well, I I know that in in Papillion, our valuations have gone up tremendously. And, you know, there's there's several reasons for that. But when you talk to the citizens and you talk about property tax, typically, it is a valuation question. In their mind is, well, the value of my house has gone up so tremendously, I can't afford to live in my house. You know, we can't do much about that. That's the county that does that. We'll have a budget coming along, and there's the discussion about, well, just it's easy. The city should just, a city and and school districts should just reduce their tax rate. It's a tax rate problem, it's not a valuation problem. We will see some of that in the upcoming budget, I assume. I don't know the answer to that, but I know it's part of the discussion.
I think the one thing, at least, I'm trying to advocate is it's both a levy and a valuation. And so leave the valuation levy up for that out-of-state issue. Apply the credit so we get the relief on the other side. But in the end, we just need to know what's the appropriate amount of revenue we need, and then set the levy at the appropriate level. And in this budget, we will be lowering the level. Any other council discussion? Last couple of weeks, we've had some ribbon cuttings, about three of them. Christian Brothers, Golden Apple, and Adams and Sullivan moved their office. Watching the legislature, the sewer agencies met, probably nothing major there, other than what Ms. Powers had mentioned, starting to look at the growth management plan and making sure that's current. And then I think there's been most of the items. Reminder, just a couple of items, Sumter Amphitheater through August still has quite a few concerts, both free ones and paid ones, so there's a series there. Library's having a book festival with local authors in September. So if you know a local artist that wants to show off their work, have them reach out to the library. Again, thanks on the cleanup days and heavy lifting there, that's a lot of work for staff. And just a regular reminder from O P P D, there are a lot of scams that are starting to go around, so we're trying to spread the word. There's some text messaging that's going around, it looks like it's coming from O P P D, don't respond to those. There's people that are reaching out to people saying you need to pay a fee to reconnect your house. Those are scams, so we're going to keep trying to communicate as much as we have. But when you're just talking to people, raise the awareness of the scams around that. And then if you're hearing from any constituents that they don't have power, it very well may be a one-off issue, just that house, and O P P D's not aware of it. Most appropriators for them to report that directly to O P P D. They've got an outage page on their website, that's more effective than reaching out to the city or anybody else. Go straight to O P P D on that and let them know, don't assume that O P P D knows if the rest of their neighbors are on and they're not. And then the last one, we've had a series of meetings with downtown redevelopment on the public works. You authorized us three years ago, I think, to negotiate with the developer. We issued an RFP, developers responded. That went through the C R A Committee, the Planning Commission, City Council, and you did recommend us to negotiate with a developer. That has picked up steam, and I would anticipate that we may actually have a purchase agreement in front of you maybe in one in the next couple of council meetings, so. And with that purchase agreement, the concept of what's being worked on will will be able to be shared. So very good meetings, we had one today, so I'm feeling good about that as well. Anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
A A zero N S.
We are adjourned.